There we go. Good afternoon, everyone. At this time, I will call an order of the Hamilton County Board of Commissioners meeting for Friday, December 20th, 2024. Please let the record reflect. We do have a quorum of Commissioners Altman, Dillinger, and Herbrink present. Joel, would you please lead us in the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the life of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
For side A, this is the approval of Executive Session Mamoranim from December 20th, 2024.
Move.
Discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Approval of meeting minutes from December 9th, 2024.
So moved.
Discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Bid opening, Mr. Attorney.
Yes, this is for the Hamilton County 4-H renovations. There's four separate bids today. Bid opening number one, which is general trades, demo framing, ACT, gypsum systems. Bid opening number two, plumbing. Bid opening number three, electrical. Bid opening number four, flooring, epoxy, VCT, ceramic. So the first one is from Fredericks. All right, first one from Fredericks. For bid, open number one, the general trades. Their base bid was $161,232 with an alternate with drywall, $18,720. There's no, and then there's no bid for number two. Bid number three, electrical. The total is $73,809, and they did not submit a bid for bid number four, flooring. So that's the first one from Fredericks. It's a second. Second one is from the Artisan Group. Bid number one, general trades, $178,360. No bid for number two, the plumbing. No bid for number three, the electrical. And they did submit a bid for number four, the flooring, at $251,825. Third one is from Connor Fine Painting. That's an excellent name.
(laughing).
Yeah, yeah. Bid number one.
Bad bid.[267.27][267.27](laughing).
They spell it right, too, so that's even better. Bid opening number one, general trades, is $65,284. No bid for number two, the plumbing. No bid for number three, the electrical. They did submit a bid for number four, the flooring, epoxy, $116,620. The next bid is from Dean LLC. They did not submit a bid for, bid opening number one, the general trades. They did submit a bid for number two, the plumbing, at $91,600. No bid for number three, the electrical. No bid for number four, the flooring. This is from Cyrillo Plumbing. No bid for number one, the general trades. They submitted a bid for number two, the plumbing, $74,375 and 39 cents. No bid for number three, the electrical, and no bid for number four, the flooring. This bid is from Facility Solutions Group. No bid for number one, the trades. No bid for number two, the plumbing. They did submit a bid for number three, the electrical, at $88,555. No bid for number four, the flooring. This is from EF Marburger and Sons Incorporated. No bid for number one, the general trades. No bid for number two, the plumbing. No bid for number three, the electrical. They did submit a bid for number four, flooring, at $274,613. That is all the bids that we have received. I believe that Steve Wood and Skender are recommending that you put this under review, and they'll submit a recommendations at the next meeting. Is that right? At your next, your first meeting in January.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
How do we have to pay extra to get a drink than you had to open those envelopes?
Yeah, that's accurate.
Would you like my knife?[414.31][414.31](laughing).
David did it for you.
They don't trust me.
David did it for you, but you had a hard time getting them one.
It's a team effort.
Yeah.[422.81][422.81](laughing).
All right, moving on, Highway. Joel?
Good afternoon.
Hi.
Good afternoon.
I have a few items today. First item falls under agreements and supplements. I have an engineering agreement. It's a supplement with GAI consultants for Bridge 56. The supplement amount is just for $197,200. The original agreement only included some survey and some preliminary design, and then this supplement will complete the rest of the hours needed for this design project. Recommend a period for supplement.
So moved.
Discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
I have a second agreement I'd like to put on the agenda if you so wanted to do so. This is an agreement with the Bridge Inspection and Immigration Program. You actually signed it last meeting. This is with USI. We turned it in and NDOT found an error in one of these dates that was within the agreement. Same exact agreement, same amount. The end date for Section 3 was revised from June 30th of '29 to July 31st of '29.
So moved.
Discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Next item I have is in regards to the bids. We opened that last meeting. Connor, you have my...
Yes. Yep, I can help out real quick. For the, so at the last meeting, there were two bids. One was for small structure plans, Whistler Road over Forker Ditch, and a second one for replacement plans for small structures, number 23055 and number 231010. The bid received for the small structure, they're both received, by the way, sorry, from OCO Inc. They were received after the noon. I don't think it was necessarily a deadline that the notice said that they can be submitted up to noon at the auditor's office. Anytime after that, up until the bid opening, they would have to be brought to the auditor in the commissioner courtroom. I think there was some confusion, and I believe they brought it to the commissioner's front desk area. It was not noticed until after the meeting, but...
12:55 if it was dropped off.
12:55, correct. So it was prior to the 1:45 PM bid opening, so it was received on time. Maybe the wrong place, but the proposals for the small ditch, or sorry, small structure plans, Whistler Road, that bid should be denied. One of the bid notice requirements was that they had to be pre-certified by NDOT. They are not pre-certified, and therefore, they are not responsible, responsive to the actual bid, so we would recommend that you deny their bid.
I move to reject the bid of their name again. I'm sorry, what's the company?
OCO. OCO.
OCO, for failure to be responsive to the bid package.
Or one of the projects, right?
Yes, well, the second one, I was about to...
The one that they're not pre-qualified for.
Yes.
Discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
The second one is the replacement plans for small structures. There was no pre-NDOT qualification, and so our recommendation for you is to have the bid open here today. If it is not the lowest bidder, then proceed with who Highway would recommend today. If their bid is lower than the apparent low bidder, then we would recommend to have Joel and his team go in the back room and review it, and provide a recommendation either today or at the next commissioner meeting.
I move to allow the bid submitted as described, and we will open and to open it at this meeting for consideration.
Thank you.
Discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
That's OCO.
I've got to deal with a sharp object again.
All right, so the bid is for, they do have a bid bond in their Form 96. The bid amount is $1,206,236.97. So I would recommend that if that is not the lowest one, then the Highway would proceed with their recommendation. If it is, for Joel and his team to go back and review this and provide a recommendation either at the end of this meeting or at your first meeting in January.
Joel, would you present the results of the bid open? Am I supposed to do it with it now?
If you don't mind, no, we'd like Matt to look at these to make sure we're good before we recommend, make a recommendation for the results.
Just deny it, take that to Alan.
Just want to make sure there was no...
He's giving you this one up.
Last night, what I had was a consultant we were assigned with. Earlier this year, we, you all assigned a project to a consultant. It was a small structure in Adams Township. We're actually under contract with that consultant for that work. However, no work has begun. We kind of wanted to wait and see what happened in Adams Township, so we will no longer be doing that project in Adams Township. And we'd like to assign that same consultant another project in another township. We're basically taking it from the...
It'll be fair.
We're taking it from the next project on the list. It's very comparable in size and nature to the one they have. So the consultant is...
Hanson.
Hanson, Hanson Engineering. Yeah.
So moved.
Second, but for the record, what, where are we moving it to? The structure?
The previous structure was, for the record, small structure 31048 on Eagle Town Road over Thomas Ditch. And this new structure that we're assigning, this small structure 33051, and it's on Lower Road at West Fork of the Bear Creek.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you.
I don't know if I need an official action for the contract that we will ultimately cancel that is in Adams Township from you all, or if this will...
Move to cancel the part of the contract.
All in favor, say aye.
You no longer have jurisdiction over those roads and bridges in that part of...
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
And then we'll be back at the end of the meeting with the bid results from this thing.
Okay.
Brad, do you have anything?
No, unless there's a reason other than us, we don't need to have a January 3rd, Friday meeting, unless you have another recent habit.
Sorry, calendar, on Apple Watch only goes out seven days.[876.12][876.12](laughing).
Siri has an objection.
I guess we'll cancel that meeting. Thank you.
Move to cancel.
Thank you.
Discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. And just with that reorg over in chairs, I just want to make sure that Connor and the Highway Department prepare some type of a letter indicating what we are going to defer to the town. It's their responsibility from this point on, and that we're not going to be involved in certain projects over there. So if you guys could work together to make sure that they get that letter and clearly understand all the federal dollars that they lost with the reorg.
Chris, how are you reorganizing, like, your snow removal group that would have been in Adams Township? What are you doing with them now?
We reassign to other areas of the county that had long routes, were able to get better service than the areas of the county.
Only a lot of the work in a bad event was contract labor, so we just won't be needing quite as much contract.
That's contract?
It's not really contract, but seasonal help.
Seasonal help.
Mm-hmm.
Well, the good news, as I understand, what I've heard is they are under contract with a private entity for snow removal in Adams Township. Well, that's good for the people that live there.
Yep, that's good. Anything else about Highway? No. Okay. Buildings and grounds. Mr. Steve Wood, the walking legend.
Yeah. Shouldn't he be here today? It's, I have a job to do, so that's why I'm here.
Well, I thought we fired you at noon.
I thought you fired me, too.[992.12][992.12](laughing). And actually, I have two items for any of the, first will be award package for the number two, for the boilers. That'll be the boilers for community corrections and for the old courthouse funds that we had available from end of year budget. To do that, we are updating every building, as you're aware of, so we would like to recommend that you approve this for Dean, for this project.
So moved.
Discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Second one is the contract you approved. We went out to an RFQ. You approved Skender to be the vendor for 25, 26 for special projects as funding is awarded through budgets. So this is the contract for 25 with the sum of $7,764,341 for the contract for the projects that we had deemed necessary and already priced out, and they will meet that obligation as well.
So moved.
Thank you.
Discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Health Department, Jason Master.
Good afternoon.
Afternoon.
I have one item this afternoon for your consideration and hopefully approval. We'd like to use some of our existing carryover dollars in one of our grants that's designed around vision, hearing, and dental to provide some additional equipment to Trinity Free Clinic. This complements the Health First Grant that we awarded for 2025 last year, oh, in November. They are seeking to purchase some equipment, and unfortunately, the Health First Grant limits what we can do in equipment. So this is really nice that we have some additional funding available that we can use to help them purchase this equipment. They're going to be purchasing some dental diagnostic equipment and a portable ultrasound scanner for vision screening. Can be used on children as low as, as young as six months of age, with a significant portion being done with elderly veterans and school-aged children in their clinics.
I applaud the equipment purchase, but I'm concerned that we don't have a clawback provision if they are not fulfilling the contract or they do not utilize the equipment. So I think the contract needs to have a clause that says that in the event that they don't fulfill the terms, they'll return the equipment to us so we can give it to another provider.
We could add that into this?
I move to approve, subject to that insertion.
Okay.
Okay.
And we'll probably pull what the language we have out of our Health First Grant agreement that this is basically complementing, which has that in there, so we'll add that to this.
One second.
Discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hey, I wanted to also, Jason, tell you that I did have the opportunity to come out and get my COVID shot out there. They were unbelievably nice, well-prepared. Give us to your nurses out there.
I told them you were coming.
They cried when they gave them the shot.
No, I just, I threatened if they hurt me, I would scream.
It was close to the end of the day, and you know how they're all like ready to close things down, and you're finishing out your day, and that one more patient shows up, but they knew you were coming, and we were ready.[1217.54][1217.54](laughing).
I want to compliment them on just their attitude and their approach to things. You know, that is the kind of thing we want in Hamilton County.
Well, I would probably be getting you some numbers, and I think it'll reflect in our annual report coming out, but we've been making some dynamic changes. We've been increasing hours, changing hours, and we're moving forward into next year with adding additional days and extending out hours, and we've seen what a success that has been for us, so happy to do it.
We have the positives.
Well, you know, it's one thing, no matter what department it is, to get the job done. It's another thing to get it done with the right attitude that we want for this county.
Absolutely.
And that's what I want to compliment you on.
Thank you. Thank you very much. I will take that back to the office and let them know that. Appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
ISSD, Chris Martins, four items. Good afternoon.
Good morning.
Hopefully Steve ISS gets the job done in a positive manner as well.
I hope so, too.[1286.32][1286.32](laughing).
I've got four items on the agenda. Just number one and number four both relate to ADA initiatives that we're going through that those new requirements came down this last year. We are tracking those. I will go back to council at some point, as agreed upon with them, to request funding back for those things we spend on ADA. The first one is Civic Plus has a couple of components to help us identify ADA issues with our current website and also within PDFs and Word documents. So that's the first one. Infodynamics is a document management solution used in the auditor's office. This is just a renewal for support for that software. Number three, Electronic Strategies is just a storage upgrade for our existing storage platform that we use. And then the last one, again, is another ADA component. That's a combination of assessment as well as some training for the web staff.
Move to approve.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you.
All right, thanks.
Chris, before you leave, there has been some, I don't know whether it's misunderstanding or lack of understanding on whose part, I'm not quite sure, as it relates to our HR department and your new computer system.
Yep.
And what, and what level they are compared to everybody else.
Okay.
I need, I need more specific to you for council, because I think they have a gross misunderstanding of it.
Okay.
It's created a lot of issues.
Do we need to, to meet in person to discuss?
Yeah, I'll get with you.
Okay.
I want to talk to you personally about it, okay?
Okay.
When's our next ISS meeting?
January, like, that 13th week, I think. 13th, 14th?
Come in to them.
I mean...
Well, you can tell me, because you're the one that designated it. I don't need you to come to a meeting.
I think it'd be good to have Heather Bennett involved in that meeting as well.
Yes.
We, we have reviewed the existing job description and can, between the two of us, can really describe, I think, what functions...
Excuse me, Councilman Hall is disputing what eligibility I understand that you guys have recommended, and that's what I need to define that.
Well, should he be in that meeting?
Well, and I wonder, too, if...
Probably. Just include him.
If we need to, did WIS evaluate it at a certain...
Yes.
And so I...
Based on what you had given to him.
Yeah, and do they need some clarification? Do we need to talk to them as well?
WIS doesn't, I don't think, but Mark does.
Okay.
I'll get with you. You and I will talk about it.
All right.
And then if we need to, we'll bring Mark in.
Okay. Thanks.
Okay, next, Court Administration, Jill Atkin. I don't see Jill.
It's me.
Okay.
I wasn't sure what to do.
Okay, awesome.
Jill was not feeling well. She went home and asked me to come last minute, so I believe she told me it was coming.
Okay, so you got the 2025 Superior Court for Pauper Attorney Contracts, Thomas Lewis, and then 2025 Superior Court Five, Adult Pauper Attorney Contract, Gregory Spencer, and then the 2025 Circuit Superior Court Administration Legal Self-Help Center Attorney Contract, Wendy Claire, and then the 2025 Superior Court Number Four, Adult Pauper Attorney Contract from Peter Kapofari. Is there any discussion?
I'll move to approve, but I would like an updated Pauper Council list of all the contracts we have.
And I have that on my computer, sent to the commissioner agenda.
Yeah, Will.
Yes, I can do that.
To me and to Connor, please.
Okay, sure.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
Grant Administrator, Mr. Clevenger.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
I am before you, seeking approval of an inter-agency agreement that is a requirement from the Department of Treasury to prove obligation of the remaining $21,000 that the committee has allocated towards ARPA-specific single audit costs for '25 and '26.
I thought we dealt with that. I'm confused.
So, talk briefly from wrong, this, you approved this dollar amount for Baker Tilly to do last minute, the last part of reporting compliance.
Right.
So you approved it. They just need to have it for the, for it to be obligated, this agreement between the commissioners and, in this case, the auditor, that shows that those funds are going to be used for that purpose. I think it may...
Do we have a document?
Yes, I think there is one.
That was emailed to you separately.
It probably, it can be done this way, or it could be done, we have the contract.
Well, just let's not have a question. We'll sign it, as I'm sure as we can.
Yes.
And the other thing is drainage funds that are floating around. Have we given you documentation of all the drainage funds?
I believe that if you guys had a drainage meeting today, that should have all been taken care of, and I should be getting it Monday.
Was that the project that you guys approved today?
Yeah, that we approved today was, had our...
That contract was the last one.
That was the last one.
So that was the last of our...
Correct.
For drainage. And we have another one for you, two more today for you for other ARPA items under my agenda.
Yeah, to complete it.
Well, okay, let's deal with the first one and move to approve the written agreement with the audit costs as presented.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
And I'd like to put on the record a motion that funds, any remaining ARPA funds that may be discovered by contract, we offset Highway on their drainage board or their drainage project's cost assessments.
And on, discussion, and on those, where would the other funds come to gap that difference that if they...
If there's a project that came under budget for drainage...
Then it shifts into...
It would cover the, if the highways, our highway has an assessment as part of it, that would offset the Highway's assessment for it.
Yes.
Is that what you're saying, Cheryl?
Yes. I just want, if there's anything out there that becomes unobligated for any reason, it's our direction that they offset what's coming out of Highway assessments.
And remaining...
In approved projects under ARPA.
And even encumbered into next year, to the extent it's necessary to encumber.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you, Tom.
Thank you.
Commissioner Committee, report, Steve.
No.
Christine.
We have a US 31 meeting, and...
Uneventful?
Uneventful, but I will forward information that we have onto Brad for his review on various stages, if you're interested.
Yeah. The only thing that I wanted to report is that Commissioner Altman and I attended the IV Tech pinning ceremony for IV Tech for the nursing school last week, and this is the second graduating class that they've had there. It's been extremely successful. I have to tell you, and I think... I have to tell you, and I think we somewhat reflected a little bit after that ceremony, just to see the faces of all those people that graduated there, all the work that we put in to make that project over there happen, and now it's one of the most successful Ivy Techs in the entire state of Indiana. And it nearly didn't happen because we had a council vote of four to three. And it was, it was, it was pretty incredible to sit there and just reflect and watch their faces and know that we had a piece and a part of that success for those people that live here in Hamilton County and are going to work here in Hamilton County and the success that they're going to have due to having that school do the things that they're doing from our workforce standpoint.
And the reflection upon the society. I mean, we have different ethnicities. It was just amazing who went through that program successfully.
Lot of, lot of mothers too, different ages all over the place.
I mean, trying to juggle jobs and childcare, it just speaks to the dedication of the graduates.
Well, and you know, I think it extends even beyond the educational portion of it because as we were going through all that and debating and trying to sell the council on it.
Yeah.
There was, and still is, I guess, a lot of crime going on in Indianapolis, and a lot of these kids from Hamilton County, where they had to been going down to campuses in Indianapolis and getting out at nine o'clock, and girls going to their cars and all that stuff versus staying right here in Hamilton County. So I think there was a major, and this, I don't want to make this sound minute because it's not, I thought it was a very compelling argument to help Ivy Tech come here and do this. So I think it's more than just the education, I think having it here has just been a phenomenal thing, and they're doing a phenomenal job, in my opinion.
They, they really are. It was, it was pretty cool to see them do that, walk through there.
Having drafted that agreement, I think we'd be remiss if we didn't mention the city of Nobleville and Senator Kenley.
Oh, and the state, and the state, and the schools.
Nobleville Schools cooperated.
Why, they used the referendum, they used the referendum to basically.
Well, we won Project of the Year with the Association of Indiana Counties and the Indiana County Commissioners Association.
Well, and then to, so what Mike was talking about, the legislature was not allowing any additional campuses for Ivy Tech from this coming along.
Yeah.
And I talked with Luke, and Luke led the charge down there and was able to get it through because he had a lot of influence at that time.
And it was a tight budget.
It was a tight budget, yeah.
All right, moving on, Attorney.
Yes, Commissioner, I have a few items. The first is an easement for Duke Energy. This is for the 4H project. Steve Wood has approved this and the legal description and everything, legal has approved as well, so I have that for your approval today.
So move.
Second.
Discussion, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Let's just need the President's signature.
It might, yes. The next item is a water, or Indian American Water Easement, this is for the 911 Dispatch Center. This is also, the location and everything has been approved by Steve Wood, and the legal description of it is accurate, and we have, we approve it as well, so I have that for your approval as well. That one also has just the President's name on it as well, for sure.
Move approval.
Second.
Discussion, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
The next, oh, this one is another utility easement. Steve, is this one for the, it's a ratification one, is it, which projects is for?
That is the one that Mr. Harebrandt, Commissioner.
What project those are for?
That is for 911, we got to have that one signed first before we go.
The one you're currently signing. So this was signed by Commissioner Harebrandt in an emergency type situation.
For ratification.
Yeah, it just needs to be ratified today for the record.
Second.
Discussion, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Can you identify which utility?
It's Indian American for that one as well, sorry, for the 911 Center Dispatch Project. The next item I have is the professional service agreement for Volt Strategies. This is for Sydney, she is our lobbyist. This is for 2025, the dollar amount was appropriately budgeted for, so I have that for your approval today as well.
So move.
Second.
Discussion, all in favor say aye. Motion carries.
The next item I have is, it's an authorization for allowance for the Pleasant Street Offices Project.
With the what?
Pleasant Street Offices Project, right next to the 4H, the Earth and, HHW. This is a request to use contingency funds for the following items, flooring upgrades, added shut-off valves, site lighting changes, parking lot changes, and change with mall mounting locations and quantities. This has been approved by Steve Wood, and there's the appropriate level of funds in the contingency to cover these allowances, so I have this for your approval today as well.
Second.
That's what also just says.
Discussion, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
The next item I have is the, this is another ARPA project to get the money out the door and obligated to meet Treasury's requirements. This one is for the townhomes at Stony Creek, the $250,000 ARPA contribution is between Hamilton County and Radiant Communities Development Corporation. That is the entity that will be receiving the money. They have received all the appropriate permits, and I believe they've already started moving dirt and doing things, correct?
They have.
Yes.
And, and compliance with the drainage board permit. Thank you again, Commissioner Harebrandt.
So that's for your approval today, this is $250,000, helps get ARPA dollars out the door in compliance. So I'm ready to go. That's what also just says.
Discussion, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
The next item I have is interlocal between the City of Carmel, the City Carmel Redevelopment Commission, the Hamilton County, Hamilton County Redevelopment Commission. This is for the East and West ramps, TIFs in Clay Terrace and for on the east, or on the west side, down east side for BJ's. The redevelopment, Hamilton County Redevelopment Commission approved this, their declaratory resolution on Tuesday. This agreement outlines the process to carve out parcels from the west ramps, which is the southern part of Clay Terrace, which right now is just earth that was flattened and demolished several years ago. Now, on the east side, removes the BJ's wholesale, will carve it out of the county's redevelopment allocation areas. Carmel will then put them in a new allocation area for them. Over the life of this, the county will receive anywhere between two and a half to four million dollars in excess of what we've already had, would have been receiving, and the appropriate language is in there that if the parcels due to any of the landowners or users appealing their assessed value, Carmel will make the county whole for our debt service, as you press official. We don't have to reverse Carmel or the Carmel Redevelopment Commission if that were to happen. So this, if you approve it today, this will go before the county council sometime in the near future. The City of Carmel Redevelopment Commission has signed it already, and the City Council of Carmel will sign it in the very beginning of January, and so we'll keep you posted as this goes along.
And someone in your office is following all the signatures and approvals on the other side?
Yes, that is correct.
Move to approve.
And that said, sorry, one thing I'll say too is the language here and the declaratory resolution that the county adopted said that, for whatever reason, if Carmel doesn't follow through or they've changed anything, then that things would revert back to as they are today, to the best of the ability. If they can't, then Carmel will essentially make the county whole for any loss that we would have if something were to change for you now and all the executed appropriate signatures for full execution. Sorry, I'm in direct here.
No, that's fine. Move to approve.
Second.
Discussion, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
And I would suggest at the end of the process, when it's all completed as planned, that we prepare deeds for the fractional interests that we have in the 421 area on 106th Street. We have several parcels they've expressed an interest in for a potential redevelopment that we transfer those to Carmel.
We can certainly make that signature as part of a list if it's completely, absolutely.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
The next item I have is Bond Reis Consulting Services Agreement for 2025, dollar amount stays the same as previous year. This is for general consulting services that Oscar Gutierrez provides to these commissioners, and also outlines any bond fees, rate fee, rate study fees, all that stuff, so you always know what it is ahead of time before anything happens. So I have that for your approval today as well.
So move.
Second.
Discussion, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
And the last thing, I apologize, is an amendment to an agreement between the Hamilton County and Westler Engineering for the Well Field Development Study. The ARPA Committee approved, what was it, $186,000 for the county to explore possible areas where there is aquifers that have an abundance of water. The original contract with Westler only accounted for $167,000, so this is adding scope to explore more areas, and it covers the additional $19,000, and with that, this would approve finalized ARPA dollars, I believe, for water purposes as well, probably most, most things, correct, Todd? This is actually the last thing that they need for ARPA dollars, and after, if this is approved, all $62 million and change will have been obligated on time as the Treasury's requirements. So I have that for your approval today as well.
Move.
Second.
Discussion, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
I apologize, that's it.
To the penny?
Yes, to the penny.
Wow.
I apologize, that is all that I have.
You, you've done a lot of work here, but you do realize Kenny can't give you any more of a Christmas bonus, right?
That's really unfortunate, I was, I was under the different.
Who's counting on that with the new house?
You want to take part of this back?
He works for cookies.
That's true.
Anything else?
That's all, thank you.
Okay. Director of Administration, Mr. Buckingham.
Thank you. I have a number of items for the agenda this afternoon. First off, presenting for your review, approval and the signature of Commissioner Harebrandt. I have SRF dispersment form related to the December 6th, 2024 invoice, that being invoice number 45880B, in the amount of $80,125.21 from Westler Engineering for Design Land Acquisition Instruction Administration and Construction Management Services related to Phase 2A and or 2B of the US 31 Bakers Corner Hampton County Regional Utility District Project.
Prove.
Second.
Discussion, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Second item I have, representing for your review, review approval and the signature of Commissioner Harebrandt, SRF dispersment form related to the December 12th, 2024 invoice, that being invoice number 52310-08, in the amount of $817,086.39 from Reynolds Construction LLC for equipment materials and construction services related to the US 31 Bakers Corner Hamilton County Regional Utility District Project.
Move.
Second.
Discussion, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Item number three, I'm presenting for your review approval and the signature, and signature. This one, I am proposing that a non-for-profit grant payment policy be established for the county to comply with the requirements of the Indiana State Board of Accounts regarding the payment of not-for-profit grants awarded by the county. The policy would permit a one-time lump sum grant payment for any grant that is up to $50,000, and for monthly payments in 12 equal installments for all grants that are over $50,000. The county attorney, auditor, and the auditor-elect have all reviewed and approved the policy or acknowledged the policy language as adequate to cover the requirements for grant administration and compliance with the State Board of Accounts. I would ask for a motion to move.
Second.
Discussion, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Item number four, presented for your review approval and the signature of Commissioner Harebrandt, as the 2024 VOC president, I have a request that has been made by Jeff Gilchrist on behalf of Senior Citizens Organization, Inc., Doing Business as Senior Citizens Activity Center, requesting that the senior center be permitted to replace the existing wood panel sign that is rotted with a new sign and add the word "activity" between the words "senior" and "center" on the building signage. They have requested the county sign off as the property owner on their permit request with the City of Nobleville for the new, new sign or replacement signage on the building.
So move. Second.
Discussion, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Item number five, excuse me, item number six, yeah, no, it is five. Presented for your information and consideration, a request has been made by Sarah Reed, Community Development Director for the City of Nobleville, to renew the lease for the gold parking lot behind SIDS proportion of 2025. The city has been made aware that the county will need to begin utilizing this parking lot for staging for a county project at some point in 2025, but they are wanting to work towards establishing a timeline for this transition so that they can begin informing the local merchants and citizenry. Steve Wood and I have had multiple meetings with the city, made them aware that we're going to be needing Mr. staging, and if, with your approval, Mr. Wood and I can continue working with the developer in determining a proper timeline for that.
So, excuse me, Lee is correct, we have been talking with the city, but I want to make sure everybody's aware of, they've also asked about using in the parking garage, and currently during certain times during trials and stuff, we're parking our staff on fourth and fifth floors, so it's going to be hard for the regular hours to have parking in that parking garage, and with some issues have been going on. We will need that parking lot behind SIDS for the construction project, that, I'm hoping if everything goes well, we can start setting trailers, obviously, before the end of April, first of May.
So you're recommending we not approve this?
So, we need to approve the portion for us, we don't want to approve the right for them to park any, to have that lot anytime past the timeframe of April. That's my suggestion. Parking in the parking garage during business hours for the county, I don't recommend because we do have times, issues with that.
So you're recommending we deny this, is that correct?
I think what you're asking for is to.
I'm a little confused.
Well, let's, let's renew the lease through March 31.
Correct, of 2025.
Of 2025.
Okay.
I think that's all we need to do.
That's right.
We can send indication that we will not be considering parking within the garage because of their capacity at times, as it stands.
And I did copy you on the email that I did send the city, pretty much stating that same thing as well.
And I have already advised the mayor when we met that we likely would not, we would be cutting off public parking in the parking garage because of issues.
Correct.
So that's for another.
Yes.
Do we need to make any final?
I need a motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries, thank you.
Thank you. Next item, presenting for your information, just wanted to let you know that letters have been received from the City of Nobleville and the engineer the City Nobleville is working with on the downtown Streetscape Improvement Project. This is a project that originally began several years ago and then was put on hold in 2020. City is basically advising that they are re-initiating the project and notifying property owners within the project area. This letter indicates that they are in the very beginning stages of the process at this time and that the final design has not yet been determined, but I just wanted to make you all aware that you will begin hearing about Streetscape again.
This is that project, what they want to do, we have to park it on both sides, and I told them they could do what they want on the outside, that was our business, but we would not agree to do away with parking on the inside.
Do you want to have any?
I don't think.
It's their committee, they can do what they wish, it's over their jurisdiction. Is that basically what you told them?
I told them they didn't have jurisdiction on the inside.
That's fine.
And we wouldn't be doing away with parking there.
Mm-hmm.
Next item, presenting for your review, the annual attendance sheet for the Hamilton County Community Corrections Advisory Board Meeting. Ralph Watson supplies this document every year for your review since the Board of Commissioners makes several of the advisory board appointments, just wanted you to have an opportunity to review that.
Thank you.
I want to, I want to address that for just a second. I noticed that Mr. Rodriguez had only attended one of those meetings, and I talked to her, she's an aeronauticoengineer, and she has a meeting that she can't control, that she has to be in Louisiana once a month, and it happens to hit when this is. She said she could attend the meetings virtually, but right now they don't allow virtual attendance to that.
Yeah.
So if they don't.
You don't want this, I don't think that's a good precedent for that group.
It's not, not for that group.
Okay, if they don't do that, then we need, she will give us her letter of resignation, we need to appoint someone else in her position.
Okay.
Thank you, and obviously we'll be dealing with lots of reappointments in our first January meeting. Next item, uh, I have for you, um, presenting for your review, consideration, approval and the signature of Commissioner Harebrandt, I have a request that's been made by Tammy Sander and Jeff Jellison to have the commissioner sign off on a production company's location release document which permits ex post facto then to film and utilize an interview.
So it's done, huh?
The, the interview was already done, I don't believe that the finished product has, has been rolled out yet. Um, it's, it's like a made-for-TV crime, true crime drama. Um, and so they want, are wanting to have a release for them to have, to utilize the, uh, film that they shot of the interview of Jeff Jellison that was conducted in the coroner's office.
In the coroner's office or the historic?
It was, I believe was conducted in its.
Says coroner's office is what it says.
I move approval. I don't see any other.
Well, second, as long as Jellison wants that interview out there, sometimes after you give the interview, you'd prefer not.
I don't believe, I don't believe that's the case, I believe he just didn't feel that it was, that he was in a position to.
Okay.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
I might add, it's talking to Jeff, a lot of healing for survivors' families, his efforts, he's done a tremendous job.
Next item I have is presenting for your review, consideration and approval, the domestic violence housing project is a project that has been in the planning stages for a considerable amount of time over the last several years. At this time, a formal vote is needed to enable additional progress to be made regarding the domestic violence center project. I would ask for a motion to approve the county moving forward with the domestic violence project specifically with TW Consulting and RQAW, uh, working as developers and Prevail as the operator, and the project focused on a domestic violence center for victim assistance in the Prevail transitional housing treatment cottage concept.
Move approval.
Second, discussion.
I won't second this and I won't vote for it. The whole concept was immediate services for domestic violence victims. Um, that's been deemed, in fact, we were told by Prevail they would not provide those services, which is obviously their decision. True. And I can go along with transitional housing, but unfortunately, this project spends millions of dollars for an office building for Prevail and provides only four units that families can go into. And it's, to me, grossly disproportionate to what county government should be doing and the services that are needed after I spoke with Hand and the type of turnover they have in those units. Those, we'll have families in there for two years and we'll only help four families for that dollar amount, so that's.
My only discussion is, is we've beat this thing down like a horse over the last year and a half. Some of the discussion from the experts that came in was that the separation of the cottages that were recommended are, if there was going to be one building with several apartments in it, there could, the close quarters could create conflicts and, um, other, um, confrontation with some of the tenants, some residents because of the higher standards in Hamilton County and the higher incomes, some of the people that may want to take the opportunity to be able to move in, um, have generally felt safer in separated cottages. It was recommended by Prevail after their, um, after, and also looking at ten other similar domestic housing unit, units and experts across the country and their recommendations as well as, uh, we did look at other providers to be able to provide services there. Only Prevail was the only one that applied for that because none of the other domestic services that are provided, um, are in their donut counties did not want to come up here. Felt like they were intruding on Prevail's space on there. Is there, all in favor say aye.
I'm not, I'm not done with discussion, I want to rebut that. Your indication of experts, I don't know who you spoke with, it was not presented to us, we'll just put that as a base. If there's a more efficient, if we want to provide that type of transitional living for domestic violence victims, we have Hand that we should talk to because the scope of what we put out for the bot totally changed during this process. Our RFQ went out for immediate services as we planned in the beginning, and that was the lack of response. We've not explored other providers and what their concerns are describing what hundreds of thousands of people live in is an apartment complex or townhomes that are multi-story where you don't have conflicts above or below. So I, I respectfully disagree with what we heard and what the economies are. And to say that people can't live in apartments is, is ridiculous to me, so.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Next.
Next item presenting for your review, consideration, approval and the signature of Commissioner Harebrandt, um, Joan Ward from Midwest Transit Equipment has provided documents related to the purchase of six vans that will ultimately be used by Janus for Hamilton County Express Public Transit. These vans were just delivered to Indigo prior to their transfer to the Janus and Hamilton County Express. The documents need to be signed by a representative of Hamilton County as the purchaser of the vehicles.
Move.
Second.
Discussion, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
And that is all I have, thank you.
Thank you. Sheriff.
I have one item for you, it is a contract. It is an additional module to Power DMS, a software solution that we already have, it's online-based. This is a way for us to track complaints, um, provides an early warning system for officers and helps us identify areas of deficiency. I was provided with an updated contract this morning that's slightly different than the one that is in your packet, there are changes to two terms. It, it makes the start date of this contract December thirty-first and it reduces the cost to, for the first year to fifteen thousand seven hundred and eighty-nine dollars and ninety-nine cents. And so, uh, that is the only changes to what you guys have in your packet. Recommend approval, it will help us out greatly.
Second.
Discussion, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
I, I have a question.
Yes ma'am.
On our service we provide to Atlanta.
Yep.
The town of Atlanta, is that continuing? I haven't seen a revised contract or do we need a revised contract?
The way the contract is written is it continues in perpetuity at a two percent cost increase per year unless one party cancels that contract. And I believe, I believe it's a thirty-day notice, it might be sixty, um, but there's no need for a new contract unless we want to change the terms of that contract or they do.
Okay, I, I thought we were, you had some discussions with them, so.
Yeah, we did have and then, uh, just resumme, or just took the other option off the table and so that one's moved forward. They, they are, they are considering options, but that is still in place at the moment.
That's fine.
Dennis, I know that there's been some discussion about, I know originally when we built onto the jail, uh, we shelled part of that out for, and got it prepared so that if we did decide and we started to get overcrowded or we need to segregate different, you know, males and females in different departments, um, that we may build that out and it would go a lot quicker because of how, what we did at the time to save money. Has there been any kind of update and how, um, are you doing in regards to a population segregation part in the jail and how is that, how's that working right now and what do you see in the future?
Yeah, that's a, that's a lot.
Yeah.
We, our current, um, uh, ability to house inmates, we can hold five hundred and, just under five hundred and twenty-five inmates, we have under four hundred in there today. The challenge comes in our medical unit, I would say primarily, that is regularly full. Uh, we have a lot of drug addiction issues and mental health issues and medical issues that are filling that up pretty quickly, so that space overflows into other space. It is more efficient to have everybody in the same building with staffing, it helps with our morale and our supervision as well. So it is something I think we should look to here in the near future. I don't think we're like at that tipping point just yet, but it's something that we should start considering.
What's your time period, what's your lead time in terms of, because it's a component cell process, correct?
Yeah.
And, and the installation goes, I think, very quickly from what I observed.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But what's the lead time to order additional units?
Um, my understanding is that is about a year, uh, just because of the production of the steel, steel cells. Uh, it has been a minute since I've looked at that specifically, but that is my understanding, is about a year lead time if you were to pull the trigger today.
It may be something we want to look at sooner than later, given that lead time.
Steve.
I agree, it would be worth a cost benefit analysis and like, uh, a little closer look for sure.
Thanks.
Yep.
Did you have a comment, Steve? The only thing I would say is we look at, he says twelve months, we're looking at, if you remember correctly, it took sixteen months to get them last time from the day of design. Only thing is positive is we have a design for them now, so that will reduce that amount of time. So if you look forward to doing this, this may be something, start looking at twenty-six to start that process of that, going in that direction.
The process of implementing or the process of order?
Ordering. So like if you could do that project in phases, you could say, we're going to do this, this is the timeframe we want the cells, get that portion worked.
Pricing together.
Correct, since we did the concrete, the sewer lines, the water lines, a lot of that stuff's done, yes, there's stuff that still has to be completed on that, but it's not as drastic it was building it.
Thank you. Robin. This is a bittersweet moment for you.
It's your time to shine.
Yes. You and, you and Kim.
Just have a few things for you. Um, we have solid waste, vendor claims and payroll claims for your approval.
Move.
Second.
Discussion, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
We have a Hamilton County Casualty Liability Trust account transfer authorization for your approval.
Move.
Discussion, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Uh, next we have some capital asset notifications for final disposal for your approval.
Move.
Discussion, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Just for your signature. Um, next I have the, um, November Clerk's Monthly Report for your approval.
Move.
Second.
Discussion, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Uh, next I have the Treasurer's November, uh, Monthly Report for your approval.
Move.
Second.
Discussion, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
I have acceptance of bonds and letters of credit for your approval.
Move.
Second.
Discussion, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
I have lease, I have bonds and letters of credit for your approval.
Move.
Second.
Discussion, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
I have the Health Trust Monthly Expenditure Report for your approval.
Move.
Second.
Discussion, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
I have liability trust monthly expenditure reports for your approval.
Move.
Second.
Discussion, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
I have payroll claims for your approval.
Move.
Second.
Discussion, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
And I have payroll, let's say payroll, not payroll, and I have vendor claims for your approval.
Move.
Second.
Discussion, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
That's all I have, and I just want to thank each and every one of you, it's been pleasure most of the time, we all serve together. And, uh, you know, my prayers, you all stay the course and it's been an honor and a privilege serving the constituents of this county.
You've done an excellent job.
Robin.
Thank you.
I have served with you for forty-four years or whatever, a long, long time. And, uh, I know you've committed most of your life to county service for the people of this county. I know most people don't realize what that means, but it, it took up a lot of your life.
It did.
So I've enjoyed working with you, thank you for everything.
Well, thank you.
And your job has become so complex since you started.
Yes, it's changed a lot.
And I don't think people appreciate the level of knowledge and professionalism you do for it.
Well, thank you.
I just wanted to say my best wishes to you and your retirement, I know you're looking forward to it.
I am.
It's well-deserved. Um, the thing that I'll remember the most about you is how much you care, um, about what you do and your integrity that you have, and you're not afraid to fight for it. And that's one thing.
What about that?
Well, that's, I, I'll tell you why, that's the one thing that, you know, you know, you hear about all these political battles and things like that that go through time after time, but, um, it's all right to have disagreements on different things and so forth, but, you know, um, I wanted to commend you and the way you handle yourself and, and the job that you did because you always put the people first.
Well, thank you very much.
So.
Merry Christmas.
Merry Christmas. And while we're also on that too, Kim, um, thank you for all of your service. I don't, how many years has it been, Kim?
Twenty-nine.
Twenty-nine years on there. My best wishes to you as well.
Me too.
Great job.
Joel.
Thank you. Um, at your last meeting on the summer night, we opened bids for two small structures, small structure twenty-three oh fifty-five and small structure twenty-three one-on-one. And for the record, I'll go through, E and B paving submitted a bid of the amount of nine hundred and seventy-seven thousand eight hundred and eighty-seven dollars.
Which project?
Small structures. Uh, both of these small structures combined as one contract.
Okay.
HIS Constructors submitted a bid of nine hundred and ninety-five thousand seven hundred and sixty-eight dollars. Hoosier Pride Excavating submitted a bid of one million one hundred and eighty-five thousand four hundred and twenty dollars and eighty-two cents. Indiana Earthworks submitted a bid of one million two hundred and eighty-six thousand dollars. Midwest Paving submitted a bid of nine hundred and twenty-eight thousand and ninety-four dollars. Whorfie Construction submitted a bid of one million one hundred and seventy-eight thousand dollars. And then today, again, we opened all those bid in the amount of one million two hundred and six thousand two hundred and thirty-six dollars and ninety-seven six. After reviewing all the bids, um, we would like to recommend awarding the contract to Midwest Paving in the amount of nine hundred and twenty-eight thousand and ninety-four dollars.
Move.
Second.
Discussion, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Let's see, we've got Mr. Garrison.
That needs to be back to the works.
Okay, okay, great. Anything else to come before the board at this time? Seeing none, we will recess to work session. Uh, we want to, on behalf of the Hamilton County Board of Commissioners, we'd like to, um, say Merry Christmas and Happy New Year to all of you out there. Thank you.
Chief's side.
He said, if they were triggered, this guy, so that he can call him. They live in the process. You see, I didn't see him.
Thank you.
They're starting one. Well, they're. 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 Stinking shit. Yeah. Yeah.